Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:10. As a reminder for public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment this evening, please send your public comment to the superintendent@stgrsd.org email address. Please include your name and your residential address. And we will read it at one of the two public comments sections. All right, in your packet that you received over the week, whoops. And the packet that you received over the weekend, you should have had a secretary's report dated September 2nd, 2020. I'll accept a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved.
My second.
Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. So that passes 7-0-0. Warrants were emailed to us last week. If you haven't signed them already, please make sure that you sign them electronically and mail them back to Amy. Any correspondence Superintendent Willard? I think you're muted.
I have no correspondence.
Okay. Okay, at this time, it's time for our first public comment. Amy, if you would be so kind to check the superintendent account and read any applicable public comment. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a couple of public comments. The first one is from Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. He says, "I'm writing the letter as a father of two players on the Southwick girls soccer team, and I am asking you to reconsider your decision to not allow Southwick to participate in the Fall 1 sports season. It was very disappointing listening to the superintendent and school board members discuss why we could not have a season with virtually no discussion about how to actually have a season taking into account the concerns that were presented. I would like the superintendent and school board members to consider a proposal that I believe would allow Southwick to participate in a Fall 1 sports season that also eliminates that superintendent's concerns about exposure. Since we already have an option of full remote or hybrid learning environment, the solution to this dilemma is to give the student who wants to participate in fall sports a choice. If they would like to participate in sports, they would need to choose the fully remote option. This way, when they go to practice and games, even if they were to be exposed by one of the opposing players, they would not be increasing anyone's exposure level except for the players and coaches on the team. If not enough players choose a fully remote option and we can't field the team, then at least we have the opportunity to play, and we need to respect the decisions that the players made. We also would know that we have done everything and explored all the options that we had available in order to try and make a fall season a possibility. Right now, I don't think anyone would agree that we have explored all the options available before shutting down the students' opportunity to play. If this option was adopted, we would have more remote students, which would further reduce the risk of hybrid students, as would have less children in the school and less children on the buses. With the students choosing the remote option, the community would need to ensure that the players are able to get to practices. Based on the comments that were made last week, this should be a challenge we can meet. The school board already indicated that busing to the games would not be a problem. It was made very clear last night that the superintendent had made her mind up weeks ago about what her recommendation was going to be to the school board. Why was this recommendation delayed to the last minute? The timing of the recommendation almost eliminated all opportunity for the community to try and come up with an alternative to consider. I just learned that the next school board meeting is not scheduled until September 15th. Even if a proposal was made from the community that the school board could reconsider, having the meeting delayed till the 15th does not leave a lot of time. It appears that this may have been strategically scheduled. I am asking that there be a special meeting scheduled next week in order to discuss this option as time is at a premium in order to have the option explored. I feel this is the least the superintendent and the school board can do. Thank you." Mr. Stevenson submitted a second public comment. Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. "I'm writing to you five days after I sent a detailed proposal that addressed the concerns that were brought up during the September 2nd school board meeting. During this last week, I've had the opportunity to read a number of the school board policies. There are a couple of interesting items that I would like to remind the school board members at this time, as it appears they have forgotten to take these into account when they made their decision on September 2nd on the fall sports proposal. In the school committee member ethics policy, BCA, it states that a school committee member's primary responsibility is to the children. The student athletes should not be forgotten. This issue is important to them, and the school board should be doing everything possible that would allow these students to participate while not endangering the other students that opted for the hybrid learning model. In that same policy, it states that the school board members represent the entire community at all times. The parents and citizens that have voiced significant disagreement with this decision are part of these communities, and their concerns should not be ignored. It is very interesting that at no place in this policy does it outline that the school board has any responsibility to the teachers of the district. It appears that the decision that was made about fall sports took into account the concerns of teachers to the detriment of the student athletes. In the policy that addresses school committee officers, BDB, it states that the superintendent is supposed to provide all relevant information to the school board so they can make a sound decision. I do not believe the superintendent satisfied this obligation. She presented her information that supported her recommendation, but that was not all the relevant information. Without having all of the relevant information, in fact, the school board members could not make a sound decision, and a vote should not have been taken. In addition, according to policy, BEDB, she also supposed to provide all supporting materials to the school board at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting to allow time to prepare. This also did not happen. Since this is a clear violation of this policy, how could the members be properly prepared to be able to vote on this recommendation? We have attempted to make a rational and logical proposal that addresses the concerns that were discussed. The school committee members were not presented with all the relevant facts and information. They did not receive the supporting material in a timely manner, as is required by their own policy. With all these discrepancies and policy violations, we are requesting that the vote be made, that the vote made on September 2nd be vacated. We are requesting that a new vote needs to be scheduled, with all the relevant information being provided to the committee members, so that a sound decision can be made on the recommendation by the superintendent concerning fall sports participation in our district. Thank you." We have another public comment. This public comment is from John Kamisa, Southwick, Massachusetts. "This is the final time writing to you to fight for fall sports, and I hope the next time we speak it is me being able to thank you for giving us our season. Student athletes have already gotten so many things taken away, especially seniors, who don't even have the pleasure to enjoy a normal school year. You've seen our fight to get our sports back everywhere you go. Whether you see the signs or watch this on the news, we're here and we'll get what we're fighting for. The community, coaches, and athletes have come up with solutions for each and every issue brought up by yourself and the school committee. We are taking it upon ourselves and our coaches to keep one another safe at all times under MIAA guidelines. As a student, I feel much safer practicing outdoors each day with the same group of 20 kids or less, as opposed to being combined in a space with a handful of students, which I'm unaware what precautions they follow outside of school. Athletes have come together with the school committee to create an agreement, which states we will go fully remote for the fall season. This solves the issue that you brought up stating that students who do sports could spread the virus to other students and teachers. Eliminating that risk, in your words, should allow sports. As you also explained, that many other neighboring towns who are allowing fall sports are also going remote. If we didn't want the season so bad, we wouldn't be going to the extent we have, pushing every single day and forming a group of athletes who have a much greater bond than anything you can imagine. So please, Ms. Willard, give athletes, your students, your seniors, their last chance to lay it all out on the field, just like you would want for your children." Okay, that concludes public comment.
Okay, no student advisory report tonight. Moving on to educational presentations. Our A.D. Sanzergren will be making a presentation on fall sports.
Yes, hello. Thank you to Superintendent Willard and to the school committee for allowing me to make this presentation tonight. But before I do, I'd just like to acknowledge the Superintendent Willard and the school committee, and thank them for standing up for your core values and beliefs in the face of intense scrutiny. At the time of the decision two weeks ago, you knew that the decision would not be positively received in the community, but your number one core value of keeping all students, faculty, staff, and their families safe at all times was the guiding principle behind that decision. It is understandable that some of us may have disagreed with the decision, but the reality is that we're in unprecedented times right now, and there is no answer to any of these questions that would be universally accepted as the right answer. Someone's always going to disagree. So having the courage of your convictions when you know that doing so is going to be unpopular is a powerful lesson to teach our young people. They obviously learned that lesson well, as the student athletes and their families exercised their rights over the past few weeks, and made their voices heard as well, which has led us to where we are now. So I'd like to take this opportunity to present an alternative that I believe addresses many of the concerns of Superintendent Willard and the school committee, and may hopefully get our student athletes back on the field. So the primary considerations that were mentioned two weeks ago, and then are kind of guiding this whole process, first of all, is the safety of all district students, faculty, staff, and in fact, the entire Southwick community. As well as the opportunity and the option for an equitable experience for all students. And obviously, education is, needs to be our primary concern with athletics as a support to enhance and enrich that experience. So those are the primary considerations, and that's where I'm coming from with this presentation as well. So addressing those, first of all, the safety of the district and the community through scheduling and logistical items that are detailed in the formal proposal document, which was sent out, the four-page document that was sent out a few days ago. The Pioneer Valley Interscholastic Athletic Conference, PBIAC, has worked out scheduling bubbles, where each school will be placed into a pod of other schools, and will only play against those schools, thereby minimizing exposure. So instead of playing against possibly 10 or 12 schools in a season, we're going to be, we would be playing against five or six, so shrinking that exposure that way. Spectator protocol, PBIAC, has said there will be no spectators allowed for any indoor sports, and for outdoor sports, they have limited outdoor spectators to home fans only. So if we were to host a game in Southwick, fans from another, another team would not be allowed to come and observe the game. And likewise, our spectators would not be allowed to travel to another community to observe the game as well. And obviously, another issue with that would be contact tracing, which was addressed in that packet as well. That is something that is manageable and doable, and it was outlined in that packet. Another aspect of this is following all CDC, EEA, and MIAA recommendations for social distancing, and PPE and the sports-specific guidelines. And again, those were outlined in that packet as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions along those lines to address that. And as we'll go through this proposal, you'll see that I am going to come up with the concept of athletic cohorts. So the idea of student athletes going fully remote was first presented last week. We have some information on that. And then I also would like to present an alternative for students that don't wish to go remote, or that don't end up on a varsity team. Amy, okay, thank you. The next one is the equitable experience of all students in the district. So with that in mind, I wanted to create a plan in which all sports at all levels can train and compete under the supervision of a qualified coach. I want to make sure everybody understands, and I think the school committee did understand, Superintendent Willard also fully understood that postponing some of our outdoor fall sports to Fall 2 basically means that we're not going to get to play those sports. Soccer, field hockey, even cross-country and golf would be, especially golf, would be challenging to play at the end of February and through the month of March. So just want to make sure we, you know, that point is made, that those sports likely that would not have a season, meanwhile, girls volleyball and unified basketball would ultimately be able to have a season as indoor sports, and they would be able to have that Fall 2 and participate in that Fall 2 season, depending on what else is going on in the world at that time. Another aspect of the equitable experience is for students that may not be able to commit to remote learning, but are faced, you know, faced with a difficult decision, and I wanted to address that in this process as well. And obviously, we're all here, we're all educators, first and foremost, even our coaches, I consider them teacher-coaches or coach-coaches and teachers. Education needs to come first. So I wanted to create a plan in which student athletes that have an issue learning remotely don't have to choose between the quality of their education and the sport that they love to play. And we did get some feedback from some, some students, as well as parents, with regard to this, that remote learning may not be the right solution for that particular person, but they don't want to say no and then not be able to participate. So I wanted to address that issue as well. We want to understand, you know, the vital role that athletics play in the physical, social, and emotional well-being of student athletes, and just allowing them to participate on some level is going to serve to enhance and enrich their overall education. And as we know, student athletes are held to a very high standard, and coaches play a vital role in keeping students on track, both academically and behaviorally. So we don't, you know, we would like to maintain that aspect throughout the fall as well. So some of the considerations around the remote learning model, as I mentioned, several parents and students have indicated they don't want to, they don't want to or don't feel that remote learning is a good solution for them, but they also don't want to miss out on the opportunity to participate. Students with IEPs would be particularly affected by this. The all-or-nothing approach to participation based on remote learning is, in my belief, is untenable. I think we needed a solution that was flexible and allowed for an alternative. So a remote learning mandate for some students, when a hybrid is being offered, is also not supported by DESI. However, the determination of eligibility for athletics is determined at the district level by the MIA, so we can determine which students are eligible for athletics, but we cannot mandate that different students choose one learning model over another. So the survey that went out to the student athletes last week after the meeting with Chairman Hool and Superintendent Willard, these are the results. Overwhelmingly, soccer has committed to going to a fully remote model, if it means that they can have a season. The girl, you see the numbers here for girls soccer, we could almost put two soccer teams together from the girls' numbers. Boys soccer as well, we've got more than a full team there. Field hockey, there was not a lot, not a lot of interest there. I think the field hockey girls had kind of resigned themselves to the fact that they weren't going to have a season. Some of them, as you see, were, would be willing to commit, but for the most part, field hockey was okay with, with, was not okay with going to the fully remote model. Cross-country, there was no representative from the cross-country team at that meeting. The coach reached out and heard back from, she heard back from probably about seven or eight of registered members of the cross-country team, and there was a lot of questions, or there were a lot of questions that she couldn't answer, so she wasn't able to get a lot of responses there. And speaking to the field hockey and cross-country coaches, they both would support the idea of maybe postponing their seasons and running with an intramural model, based on the numbers in these surveys, as well as just talking to the people that they've talked to from their teams. Golf, again, overwhelmingly was in favor of the remote learning, and girls volleyball as well, would have no problem putting a team out there under that, under those terms. So with all that in mind, obviously, you know, we just talked about these conclusions for each of these individual sports. Girls soccer, boys soccer, golf, definitely have these to support within the teams for a fall season. Field hockey, cross-country, not so much. And then girls volleyball could do it, however, concerns of exposure within the building, we don't want to bring teams in from outside the district to play within the building. So my proposal would be to postpone girls volleyball and unified basketball to the Fall 2 season. So my proposal is this, my primary proposal is to allow for interscholastic varsity participation in the MIA traditional fall season, in golf, girls soccer, and boys soccer, while postponing volleyball and unified basketball to the Fall 2 season. Volleyball would be allowed to train during the traditional fall season, but would not be competing. And the second half of the proposal would be to postpone field hockey and cross-country to Fall 2, and allow them and all sub-varsity soccer and golf participants, JV teams, to train and compete intramurally during the traditional fall season. The intramural program be coordinated by the varsity coaches and supervised by the JV coaches. And what that model does is it allows for some flexibility within the remote learning model. So any student that doesn't feel that remote learning is a viable option for them, or feels that it would negatively impact their education, would still be offered a, or would still have the opportunity to participate and train in their sports, and depending on the numbers, could even have some intrasquad and intramural type games during the course of the season. As an alternative to that, I would also encourage the school committee to consider if we do not compete in fall athletics interscholastically, to allow for full intramurals during the fall season, and allow all athletes to participate in an intramural-type program. This is, I think, less optimal. The competition aspect definitely is lacking with the, with this proposal. However, I think it is a viable option to get the students out there and training and participating. Other options to consider, and have already probably been considered, to make, to just go with the all-or-nothing approach and make eligibility for interscholastic athletics contingent upon, contingent upon the remote learning, each athlete go into the remote learning model, and allow participation based on that. The other option would be to participate fully in athletics with, within the bubbles in all sports, except for volleyball and unified basketball, which would be pushed back to Fall 2. That essentially was voted on on September 2nd, but it remains an option. And option number five is to postpone all fall athletics to Fall 2 season without allowing participation during the fall, intramural or otherwise. And as previously stated, very likely that due to weather, safety concerns, as well as the lack of opponents from others, other schools, only volleyball and unified basketball would be viable options for the Fall 2 season, should we choose this option. And that, I guess, concludes, concludes the presentation, and hopefully, you know, there's something there that we can hold on to and maybe salvage some sort of a season for our student athletes this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, A.D. Sanzergren, for your presentation. At this point, I'm going to open up the floor to the committee to ask any questions. I would make one comment, though. You referenced your document, your Word document that was emailed. The committee did not get a copy of that until today, so you might have to fill in some blanks with some questions today. So I'll open up the floor for questions.
Hi, this is Chelsea Berry. One, I don't know if this is a good starting place, but it's what's on my mind. So one of my biggest concerns is making sure that our students can get to any school function that we are supporting and providing. I want to know, in your thinking, how will my Monday, Tuesday cohort child potentially, or my fully remote child, how will they be able to access practices and games?
Yeah. Well, I think, obviously, the ideal scenario is, you know, we, we support the funding and the, you know, logistical aspect of being able to bus, but realistically, I don't, I don't really see that as being a viable option. I would say, though, that during the course of any normal school year, you know, our hockey team has to get themselves to practice usually at 5:30 in the morning. We have our basket, our winter teams, our basketball team sometimes practice at 6:30 at night, students go home and have to come back. We have plays and things like that, other activities, where students leave after the school day, and families bring them back. So the precedent is there to support, and I think the families would agree that we're going to make that work and find a way to get their student athletes to and from practice every day, if it means that they get to play. So that would be my proposal and my thoughts on that. As I look, looking through the numbers of registrations, we have, currently have 151 student athletes registered for the fall season. Twenty-eight of those live outside of Southwick, right? And of those 28, eight of them are juniors and seniors, and many of them will drive themselves, most likely. And another, another three of them have parents, one of, one of my coaches has two of those kids, so they have parents that are in the district, so they're, they'll already, you know, the parents will already be here. So that leaves us, you know, we're basically talking about, assuming that the juniors and seniors drive, or let's say half of the juniors and seniors drive, we're talking about 20, 20 students, and based on the fact that they're going to be remote learning, obviously, that, you know, they're all going to have to get themselves here. But we're talking about approximately 20 students out of 151 that would have to make that work. In addition to the ones that live in Southwick, and, you know, too far to walk, but that's just the ones that live outside of district.
For, when we're transporting, when someone else can, might be, can answer this, well, actually, you can too. For, I'm thinking about students giving other students rides, and I'm just really concerned to think that it is our responsibility to make sure that these are safe rides. I I do not want students traveling with inexperienced drivers getting into accidents for something that is our school-sponsored event. I also don't want them in a car together sharing germs. But both of those are high up on my list. I'm, I'm willing to listen to different ideas and creative solutions or ones that are safe and legally responsible. I don't know, that's on my brain.
No, and that's, that's understandable. I, I'm not going to pretend that I have the answer that's going to satisfy that. But I, I do think that there are options out there and there are ways to make it work and it's, you know, working out logistics and getting coaches involved to, to talk to parents and there's, there are ways of, of making it work. It would just take some, some, some light work.
So I'm just going to put this out there. This is Pam. I can't vote for anything if I don't know exactly how that's going to happen. So it is your job to tell me how that's going to work and I cannot vote for anything until I have answers and I know that.
Well, as, as I stated, my, my proposal would be for families to, to take on the responsibility of getting their student athletes to and from practices and to the school to catch the bus to go to away games every day. That would be my proposal is to put that on the families and then.
Then I would need to see data similar to what the school district did from families guaranteeing that they could do that and that they could do that safely. The school district had to put out a transportation plan to get our kids to and from school and they needed that information from the parents. And they got that data and they gave that data to the school committee and I would need to see the very same thing with regard to how we're going to transport or how families are going to guarantee that they can safely transport students.
This is Maria. I, I agree with Pam. The district spent a lot of time putting a, the education plan together from, from the bus schedule and the, the logistics to what's going to happen when your kid sneezes in the bus stop or in the bus. There are no, there's no specific plan. You're hoping that the parents will do this. You are hoping that there, there's a solution at some, somewhere along the line, but I don't see anything written step by step tonight.
This is John Sean. So what is our liability? Like, what do we do in these situations now if there was an incident where somebody goes, you know, they go to your, like the examples you gave where they're going to hockey practice at five in the morning and they're, you know, they've got basketball practice where they've got to come back after school. Obviously, those seem very similar to me and I get Pam, the, definitely the point of we need to have some validation that all those kids can in fact get those rides and, and what those rides are going to be like. But I do think there's some overlap here in what we're already doing. I just, it would seem like we need that, we need what you guys want before we could revote on anything as soon as possible, basically, like to have sign off from, and I don't even know if we can get, can we get sign off? Is that something we can ask to have sign off on from each person that they're going to be able to provide themselves transportation to it and?
That, that may be something that either Superintendent Willard or Mr. Pressnell could, could address as far as, you know, liability and whether a waiver would be a possibility, something like that.
And this is Maria. Maybe this is something that we need to look at for the hockey team and those basketball after school practices. You know, maybe that's something that needs, you know, it was a gray area, maybe we need to address it. I also, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Maria. No, no, go ahead. You go.
All right. This is still Maria. So looking at your plan or your presentation, there are a few questions that pop up and I, I just kind of writ, I wrote a few notes as you were speaking. So you were talking about, okay, so we'll have practices. How are you going to monitor the student athletes when they come to practices or games in terms of taking their temperature? Do you have a spreadsheet that will log all that information in? How about their equipment? How is it going to get, you know, transported and sanitized? Do you, have you put any thought into that?
Well, I think the, yeah, the MIAA guidelines kind of spell that out.
The guidelines are one thing, but I would like to see it in writing for our students to understand, okay, this is what you're going to be subjected to. I get the guidelines. It's a guideline from MIAA, but it needs to be
Yeah.
Put into perspective for the, the students at the, the original high school.
Okay, fair enough. Coach Chris Wally, the boys varsity soccer coach, is currently coaching a, a couple of club teams during the summer. And he's our, he kind of laid out to me what he does with his team, which I think is a great model. When they show up to the field, there are cones laid out on the sidelines for them, six feet apart. Each player goes to a cone, their baggage put down at the cone, at that cone. That becomes their space while they're there. When they, when they walk away from that, their masks go on. And the guidelines are followed from there. They work in different, different cohorts during practice to minimize contact during, during the practices and the drills. And that would be something that, you know, all coaches would be, you know, and, and I would sit down and make sure that we're all on the same page and then communicate that to all the players and families so that everybody would, would know coming into it. But, you know, that, that's a good, I guess, image of, of what, you know, the, the beginning of a practice would, would look like. People show up, they go to their cone, they're six feet, six feet apart and they wait for instruction from the coach from there.
Again, that's the kind of details that I appreciate. That's the kind of data that we need. But I have to say that in speaking with many student athletes in many different towns, they have made it very clear to me that there's a whole lot of flexibility with regard to how much these MIAA guidelines are being followed. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent convinced from what I have seen and from what I have read in your document that this district is a hundred percent committed to making that work. I need to see more details.
Well, I, I think that, that flexibility that you're speaking about comes from the coaches of those individual programs. And my job as, as the leader of the coaches would be to set, set the terms and say, this is what it's going to be. Similar to what the administrators in, in each of the buildings has done for teachers to say, this is what the expectation is within your classroom and, and then hold them to it. And I need to be a presence down there and make sure and ask questions and, and handle situations that, that arise.
So again, I guess we need to see in writing how you're going to do that and what the consequences will be and how you will hold those coaches to, to the standards that we all hope can be abided by.
Okay, fair enough.
This is John again. So, yeah, it, to the point, and I, I totally get that we should have, there should be something that the coaches should be trained on how to enact these policies and that should be very clear to them what they should do and shouldn't do, like. So I just, as far as what would the plan have been? Or if, for some reason, I don't think we're headed down this road quite yet, but if, if we approve something tonight to do that, I assume all these things that you're talking about would, would try to be, try to be implemented. Right? Like what would your, if we, if we change something tonight, tell me about like what your next steps would be in that process of making sure that these guidelines are followed. Because I think hearing some of that would, you know, we can do that work upfront and do it now versus, you know, doing it, approving it and then saying, okay, go out and fill out all these guidelines, which is what their concern is, you know, what are, what are the, what are the guidelines before we approve it? So if we said yes to it, what, what would, what kind of action would you take tomorrow to, to make it happen?
Well, I think we, we can back it up a step. Most of the coaches are aware of, of the expectations and the guidelines laid out by MIAA already. That's our, that information's already been communicated to them, so they, they're already, you know, kind of aware of the expectations of what the guidelines are. My first thing would be to call a coaches meeting and put together the, the presentation to them to say, this is exactly what your practices are going to look like. This is, you know, step by step, these are the expectations, these are the guidelines. This is what, you know, how we're going to communicate it to student athletes and families. And this is going to be the, the consequence for those that, that don't, you know, that, that aren't in compliance. And that would be the very first thing that I, that I would do. And, you know, obviously there's, there's other, you know, logistical issues behind that, but the, the first thing that I, that I would do would be to create that document for the coaches and have a meeting within the next 48 hours to say, this is what we're, you know, what the expectation is. And it's going to be based on those guidelines that they're, they're already familiar with. So it's not going to be, you know, a shock to them by any, by any means. They should be pretty well versed in, in what is going to be expected of them. It's just going to be following through to say, this is, you know, this is how we're going to implement it here at Southwick. And so my follow practices, which I believe Chris Wally has already kind of, kind of doing with, with his teams. And I would bring him in as, as a resource for that, as well as, you know, Clark Moore is involved with some of those club programs as well. And we could use the soccer model for all the sports. I don't think that, you know, the expectations of, of wearing a mask and, and social distancing and, and PPE and all that stuff would be any different for, for different sports. I think that's going to be universal. So we can take that model that's already being utilized by one of the coaches. We're, we're fortunate to have a coach in the district that's, that's been doing it already for two or three months. And he would be an invaluable resource for me to educate the other coaches on exactly how to go about doing it and implementing it.
Okay, so in, in sort of just reading the room here, I think it's pretty obvious to me that we're not gonna, I, I don't think, I mean, so I, I was, you know, on the, on the, you know, the side of supporting the sports and, and trying to move forward with that, but obviously we're at a point where we're trying to compromise. We're trying to find the middle ground and I think I can read the room enough to know that we haven't gotten there yet in what we're, what we're seeing. So all the things you talked about, I, I don't know if the committee is open to, you know, you talked about within the next 48 hours, if we can get that sort of documentation together quickly so that we can look at something. I, I don't know when the next time we could have, usually we only have meetings every couple of weeks. If we wait a couple of weeks again, we're going to be in a tough spot, the season will be even further gone. But I, I just get the sense that no one here is going to change their minds on anything until we see those documents and not to say that it's a race to do it, but the sooner we get it, the sooner there's a chance. You know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make a motion to reconsider, but I don't think that, just looking around, I don't think that that's going to go over so hot. So tell me what, what, and I guess this is again for everybody, what kind of guidelines can we give him to come back with, with something that what you're asking for?
Thank you, John. This is Chelsea. I just want to say that this is important to me. I do want our students to play and to have something. I believe so much in, I'm a teacher and I know that your mental health and your physical health come before we can even expect to try to teach you a single thing. I understand that, but I do, I just want to see the specifics. I want to see the login of what it looks like when a kid goes through the system or the symptom checker. I want to see how exactly the kids from cohort C are going to make it and will they be able to access and get rides safely to whatever game it is? I just want those details to make sure that this is accessible and safe.
This is Maria. I also would like to, for you to expand on your equitable slide, you know, how are you planning on handling the issues of those students who cannot do a cohort A or a cohort B, that they're on a cohort C, that they have to go to school every day? How are you going to implement that into a soccer practice when they have to go to school and all that? That's something that needed to be explained.
Well, I think, I think for those students, the intramural option was kind of, in, in my proposal was designed to address that issue. The students that were, would not be able to commit to going fully remote for whatever reason. So the students that you're talking about in cohort C, I think, would fall into that. And they would be able to, to train and practice with, with, with a coach, intramural model where they're not coming in contact with students from other districts. It's just within the Southwick community.
This is Chelsea. I love that we're trying to think creatively, but I have a serious problem when potentially cohort C kids are potentially students on IEPs who need more academic support are now forced not to be able to participate in playing against other teams. So I would not be able to endorse that kind of idea that puts our kids who need more academic support to have less of an, uh, sport experience.
That's kind of like excluding them, I believe, you know, from that team experience. This is what they, you know, they want to play as a team, so now you're, it's going to be breaking them apart just because they're in the, in a position that they need to go to school. So just that, that's my, my train of thought in that. And also you said something about we can determine who's eligible for athletics as a district. Can you explain that? Because who's in charge of making that decision? That was in you on, on one of your slides.
Yeah, well, that, that's geared more toward the, the district policy on, on academics.
Okay.
Grades and things like that, but the districts determine eligibility within the confines of the MIAA guidelines. The, the MIAA sets a loose framework and then leaves it up to the districts beyond that to, to determine that.
Thank you.
You're muted. You gotta unmute yourself. Bottom left corner.
You're still mute.
You're still muted. There you go.
Just a little technical difficulty.
While we're trying to get Ted's microphone up and going. So David, I got to be perfectly honest with you. This is Pam. We received your, your document today. I've worked all day long. I haven't had the opportunity to read it thoroughly, other than just briefly skim it before the meeting. I was really hoping that this presentation would put clarity on it for me and it seems to have done the opposite. I, I'm feeling more confused now than I was before. I, I guess, you know, you started out recognizing that safety was our biggest concern. And then I got confused with regard to like where we're going with this. So would student athletes be remote? Or would they be in the building? Or would it be a mix of both? I'm just, I like, honestly, I'm just confused at this point.
So, so the proposal was to have varsity athletes compete against other schools. Those student athletes would be remote. And the, and any junior varsity athletes would be competing in an intramural program. They would not be competing against other schools. And that could be whatever learning model that those students are, are in currently because they will not be coming in contact with students from other districts, which was the, the primary concern.
So the stipulation being, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you are going to play varsity, then you must learn. that if you are going to play varsity, then you must learn remotely.
That was the proposal based on the survey that was done um, on on remote learning.
Okay, now. There wasn't unanimity in that, though, was there? There was a, there was still, so what? Yeah, when we go back to like the soccer, there was still a group that weren't going to do it, right?
Yes, but I think what what you'd find is that the, when you, when you break down those numbers and look at the individuals, um, the players that were going to play on the varsity team all agreed to go remote.
Okay.
And and the ones that that had apprehension with some of the underclassmen and younger players that were probably not going to be on the varsity team.
So if you're on a varsity team, you're going to volunteer to remote learn?
Yes.
Now, what about the siblings of varsity athletes? Would they also be remote? Or would they be hybrid as well?
Uh, that was not addressed within the survey. It was not mentioned um, with Chairman Hool and Superintendent Willard's meeting. Uh, obviously, that's, that's another question that would would have to be answered probably by others besides me.
And this is getting into the area that I wanted to bring up is the area where a lot of the, some of these kids are not only are playing now for club teams, other teams outside of the district. And, you know, what are we doing at that point?
There's, there's kids in the rec leagues that are playing. There was a a two hour, uh, field hockey clinic at Wally Park like two days ago. So I don't know what, you know, I saw the flyer for it. I don't know what the, I don't know where the lines are on what's okay and what's not okay. And that's part of my problem is allowing a an eighth grader or an eight year old to play and not allowing our varsity kids to play. And I'm on the side of allowing the varsity kids to play. Uh, I just think that there's got to be some sort of something that it's got to be one way or the other. And in the confusion here I have is what the MIAA owns and what whatever the rec center is allowed to do, which again, though, is why I'm always on the side of this talking about who's going to run into this person, who's going to run into that person. We've got kids that work at Big Y. We've got kids that are all over the place. And I just don't know that it's feasible to assume that they're not going to mingle somewhere any anyway. So not to mention if they've got younger siblings who are, it's, you know, okay for them to play soccer, or it's okay for them to play whatever record, club, league. I just have looked at it from the perspective of I can't, there's just, things are out of our control completely. And I, you know, that's why I've been mostly supportive of it because I just recognize the realistic nature of how things are going here. There's kids that are seventeen, eighteen years old, are, they're working, they're driving over, they've got friends. We saw at the last meeting where unfortunately, they weren't, you know, totally social distanced and all that stuff. But they, you know, these kids are going to find out ways to hang out with each other and that kind of thing. So I've just have struggled at all with this pseudo belief that we've separated the cohorts. I kind of don't necessarily buy into it, but, you know, that's my opinion and I'm only one vote. So I, but I just thought I would throw that out there.
And to your, to your point, John, um, there are, there are a lot of other alternative programs that many of our student athletes would, are taking if if not presented with the option to to compete here in Southwick. And if we have them here in Southwick, we can control the messaging, we can control, um, you know, the their behaviors and, you know, with the coaches and the expectations and the guy and make sure that they're sticking with the guidelines and within the parameters. Uh, if we don't, if they don't have that option, then they go out and they play for a rec program or they play for a travel program somewhere, and they're still bringing that back with them, assuming that they're not uh, remote learners. They're still bringing that back with them into the building. So, yeah, I mean, to your point, we we can't control what they're doing outside of our our school.
And I, you know, I admit, as as a parent who coaches regularly in the rec centers, coached my kid's soccer team for the last, I don't know how many years. Uh, the guidelines ran me away from wanting to coach this year. So I, but I totally respect if people want to do it, that's, I'm totally okay with that. I just didn't want to deal with it from the coaching aspect. I just don't have enough time in the day to to add that to my plate of things to do. Um, but if the kids want to and are okay, and that's why I've been okay with the high school, if they're okay with with dealing with these guidelines and we can lay them out and they can follow them, then then I I'm fine with it. Um, I just don't, it doesn't seem like we're going to get there necessarily without some further structure at least, though.
This is Chelsea. I just wanted to say, John, I appreciate your point of view. And I think I was at a different place two weeks ago and really worried about um, cross contaminating against, um, our different districts. Um, because the people that we are allotted to play with are at different um, COVID levels, if you look at the little map and the color codedness. But there are so many things that we can't control. We can't control if they go to club sports. We can't control if they go to Maryland. Um, there's so many things we can't control, but we do have a great mask policy at school. We have a lot of hand washing. We have a lot of, um, hand sanitizer. And we're really believing in the fact that those those different things that we're doing are going to help mitigate the spread of virus and germs. And so I think before my biggest, one of my biggest concerns was bringing in those extra germs and adding extra risk to our athletes and bringing them back into our district. Um, but I can see how the different protocols put in play by MIAA and here at the district could be enough to be safe. But I still am worried about getting our kids there and making sure that they can all participate. So I'm
Yes.
I'm changing.
Well, so in the, in the spirit of trying to move forward and trying to find the, you know, the compromise here. So I think the first thing was, we obviously to get backing by the whole group, we're going to have to get something in writing that we can all look at about what the steps would be before we can probably get further consideration, I'm guessing. And um, you know, I don't know how quickly after that we can we can act or not act, but it just seems like where we're, where we're at.
Well, just, just so you're aware of the timeline, the, uh, MIAA's new dates for the fall season have the first practice this coming Friday. Would be the the first day the teams can practice.
Yeah, and and that was the second, actually, that you said that is a second thing that um, you reminded me of something I was already thinking. Are we, could we give an okay for the kids to go ahead and practice, even though we don't know whether they're going to play against other teams for now? Is that something we can do so that if we, in the meantime, while we're trying to come up with our final decision, can they be practicing and preparing for the season? Uh, and at worst, let's say we can't okay them playing other towns, that we could then just go right into it being an intramural thing? Is that something we can do to bridge the gap here while we get the guidelines together so that they're not waiting to practice on us? Um, just just setting the expectation that basically you can practice for now, we'll still try to figure out whether you can play other people or not, and we'll work on it being A or B?
Well, I think, from from what I'm hearing, the the information that you're you're looking for would involve how do the kids get to and from practice? And what is the, what are the practice protocols?
Yep. I mean, I'll let, I'll let Pam and Chelsea run more on the, on the point of the things they want. Uh, I I agree, and I like the idea of what they're bringing up of seeing that pinpoint accuracy of what they do this, they do this, they do this, and it's clear to everyone and it's written out on a piece of paper. You're not on.
So it sounds like there's two major points here. Besides, beside the fine detail that some folks are looking for. Um, I think the biggest concern right now is equity. And, um, I think we would have to get some sort of a legal opinion on that because for the same token that we can't force kids to go fully remote, uh, I think we're going to get ourselves into trouble forcing kids to be on the intramural side of the game, uh, when they have the potential to be eligible for a varsity sport. So I don't think it's as cut and dry as it's being put out in this proposal. Uh, that's my first comment. Second comment is transportation is a problem. That also creates an equity problem as well. I'm almost positive, and I'd have to go look deep, but I'm pretty sure we have a transportation policy that includes a liability waiver. Uh, that would have to be employed, and I hope it's being employed, and hoping is never a good strategy. But hoping that it's employed for the, uh, the hockey that you mentioned earlier. Um, because that is a big concern. Liability is a big concern. And, you know, I know parents want to step up and do everything they can for this, but um, the reality is that we need to make sure that we're checking the boxes that we have already established as policies.
Yeah, sorry. Can I, can the, can you jump back to the first point and explain the, the interim? When you said the intramural and the varsity part, I don't understand. What, what is, can you give me further detail?
So my concern is, from an equity standpoint, if you've got a child that's a senior that's on an IEP who has to go to school.
Right.
We would force them to play intramural sports, which I don't think we can do.
I didn't catch that part. Okay. Yeah, I get what you're saying. Sorry about that.
Um, for confirmation purposes, Dave, I do have a question. So can you confirm who Southwick would compete with in the bubble cohort?
Yeah, sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, yeah, so our, our bubble would be Hampden West. And it would be Westfield, Agawam, West Springfield, Holyoke, Northampton.
Superintendent Willard, of those districts, how many are fully remote right now?
Or those districts are fully remote. Southwick, Tallinn, Granville, and Agawam are both hybrid.
Just to put that in perspective for the committee. I appreciate John's thought process on this. Um, I think I'm fortunate that we have to come to some resolution. And, uh, we would either have to determine to make another meeting later this week or, uh, we come to some resolution tonight as a committee and pick one of the options that have been laid out. I think one of the big hangups, and I think this is a lesson learned for the AD, is that when we, when you pull these plans together, we need to make sure that the details are in place. I know these are unprecedented times, and I know this isn't business as usual. But the reality is that the MIAA is focused on the field. And ultimately, the school board is responsible for on the field and off the field and everything else that it impacts. And I think that's a lot of the concern from the board is everything that's surrounding it and not necessarily what's happening on the field. And that really hasn't been well spelled out, and there seems to be more questions than we have answers at this point.
I'm also very concerned about the language in the document that you sent regarding um, contact tracing and spectator protocols. Um, I, the, it, I was, again, quickly skimming it because I just got it today, but it sort of seemed like we were just relying on the kids to tell us that they were okay, writing down a list of names of kids that were there, handing them to another coach, and then if somebody tests positive, relaying that information and allowing, but not requiring folks to get tested. Um, and maybe I didn't read all the language carefully, but the the language seemed quite vague to me. Um, so if you could go back and and spell out your, um, plans for spectator protocols and contact tracing, um, that might help as well.
Yeah, well, I I think, maybe I didn't specify here, but the idea, the idea there would be to go into back into the district protocols for testing and contact tracing based on a positive test, based on, um, you know, who came in contact with whoever tested positive. And you're right, I didn't, I didn't spell that out in there, but at the point where there's a positive test and we've determined that there was exposure, uh, we would then go back into the district protocols for that, for testing and and everything else.
I think that there, even if it's legal, I think that there is no way that we can pigeonhole any student group into choosing a different, a different sport course, athletics course than they should. Um, I'm wondering if right now is the point where we make some kind of motion potentially that could get edited to, um, consider option four, which is the full participation in sports except for volleyball and unified basketball contingent or with games, participation in games and matches contingent on the development of these protocols that we were looking for. That was very vague. I'm just trying to move us forward.
So right now, we're in educational presentation, so.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
So
I am jumping the gun.
So we actually have action items tonight, uh, surrounding sports.
I was really trying, sorry.
Yeah, you are. Uh, so I I guess at this point, I want to double check that. Uh, does anybody else have any further questions uh, for the superintendent or, uh, AD Sanjagran at this point?
This is Maria. I do, um, your survey, this survey was sent to, who specifically? Was it sent to students or was it sent to parents? Who made those decisions of choosing voluntarily to go remote?
Uh, there was no specific survey sent out by myself or or the district. The survey was a result of the meeting that Chairman Hool and Superintendent Willard had with representatives from each team last week.
So the representative of each team sent a survey out to the parents or to the students? Do we have that answer?
I believe the, the directive at that meeting was for them to check with the students on the teams. But I I also know that, uh, the the coaches kind of took that and and ran with it and sent emails out to the families and to the parents. So the parents were involved largely. Um, and again, this was, this was something that was directed at that meeting. Uh, and I was involved in the periphery, just providing information to coaches about what was said at that meeting.
Quick question. Were 100% of the team members um, were surveyed on this survey? I mean, I see twenty one registered boy soccer teams. Um, that seems a little bit low, but you know, what was the, do we have names to the survey? So we say, okay, Maria said, um, said yes, she wants to go remote. Do we have a tally of, okay, if we're gonna go with this, this learning survey, who said yes, who said no? Was 100% of the parents or actually the student players, athletes, were they surveyed?
I can't, I I don't know that 100% of them were, but I do have the the breakdown by individual for, I think, four out of the six sports there. Um, so I do have it broken down by individual and what their response was.
This is John again. I just have one last thing. If, if you had forty eight hours to put together these guidelines and come back to us and we had a special meeting on Thursday or something along those lines, which again, I don't even know is possible, is that something that you feel is feasible?
Well, I think that, I think the guidelines are already exist, and that's one of the reasons why. Um, I guess I didn't, I didn't think to put them into this particular presentation. The MIAA guidelines are are pretty detailed as far as what a practice is going to look like. The part that's missing from that is just a Southwick specific, you know, aspect of it of of how we're going to implement it here in Southwick. And that's something that I could put together pretty, pretty readily.
Yeah, I I'm just, I'm looking at Pam and Chelsea as the, as the ones that really want to see that stuff. I want to see it too, because I think it's, it's helpful. But I just want to give them the latitude to, are those the things that you want to see? What else do you want to see? Like, if you had two days to put that together?
I think that the challenge for that would be with the transportation piece and how are we going to get them back and forth and the liability that goes along with that? That's something that I don't know that I could put together, um, in a timely, timely manner.
This is Maria again. Would it be possible to get a list of that survey, those survey answers? Especially that students said yes and no and, and so forth?
Yes, I can forward you what I have from that.
That would be great.
Should I send it to Amy and then she can just distribute it to everybody?
Yeah, I was just gonna.
We shouldn't be seeing the students.
Yeah, that's gotta be a privacy issue.
We, we just want to know like percent here, like how, how many kids, how many kids are there? How many of them were surveyed? Who was surveyed? Was it the kids? Was it the parents? I mean, we just, we're just looking for, you know, statistics regarding how a survey was completed.
How many of those kids were our juniors? How many are seniors? Who plays in the varsity? Some juniors don't play in the varsity, some juniors play in the junior varsity. How many freshmens or sophomores play in the varsity?
Yeah, I mean, I, I could get all of that for you. I have it in emails that were sent to me. I will say that the soccer ones were done largely with the coaches' involvement. The coaches all had access to who was registered for each sport. And the emails were sent to the email address for the family ID profiles, I believe, for soccer, boys and girls. And I believe every, everyone received the survey. And, I mean, you saw the numbers, I think there were only a handful of non, either undecided or non-responsive for soccer. I know cross-country, an email was sent to families, most of them did not respond or had, or had questions that left them undecided. Field, field hockey and volleyball, the representatives from each team were instructed to contact the members of the team, and I don't know the coaches' involvement from those. But again, this came as a result of Chairman Hool and Superintendent's meeting last week. I only was involved to the extent that I told the coaches what happened in that meeting and asked them to get the information to those representatives of who was registered.
And so to clarify, I think we're, we're misrepresenting the, the purpose of that meeting. I want to be clear on that. There was some things going on with the students that were getting to a point where we were a little bit heading in the very wrong direction. And I asked Superintendent Willard to set up a meeting with Principal Tummel and the students, student representatives from each sport. And the purpose of that was to educate them on the process so that they understood how to try to solicit a different outcome of what was going on here. You know, all, all the committee's hearing is vote again, vote again, vote again, and no other alternative ideas were being presented. So I think folks are taking my idea of, you know, surveying the, the families as, you know, this was going to be a home run and, and folks are going to vote on this, when I was just trying to get them to think out of the box of, what other ideas could we come up with to present back to the school district so that a plan could be formulated and formally brought back to the school board? I, I'm concerned that there's a lot of what-ifs and assumptions being made here about family decisions and other things, because I cautioned the students during that meeting that they need to be aware that other families have reached out that had sports children in that family that were very happy with the decision and not to put pressure on to those families. So again, this, this concept of equity is still a problem that we're going to have to address. But I would like to thank the students that participated. They were very respectful, their voices were heard, and they carefully listened to the district's concerns as well. We also had a very candid conversation about some of the behaviors that were going on that were not really representative of an SRS RAM. And they should be proud of what they did representing the teams that they did. But by no means were we trying to map out an idea. We were trying to help them to formulate an idea to work with the district to try to come up with an alternative.
This is Chelsea. I wasn't at the meeting, and I didn't come up with the idea to have everyone go into fully remote if they wanted to play varsity. I feel like that portion of a survey for me is a moot point because I don't want anyone to choose something that, or an academic choice that isn't actually perfect or as perfect as it can get in this situation for them. I don't want them to compromise their education for this, for this athletic choice. So I don't even know if I need the percentages of that specific data because I don't want students to be going fully remote if it doesn't work for them.
Yeah, I think, and I definitely agree with that. I've spoken to a few parents who had that, that concern that fully remote didn't work for them, but if they, you know, if my son or daughter chooses not to go remote, then they can't play, you know? Parents had that concern, and that's where the proposal to have that intramural option came through so that everybody would at least have the opportunity to participate and to train in their sports with a coach.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask one more time of the committee. Does anybody else have any other questions for the A.D. on what was presented this evening? Anybody on the phone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanchagran, for your presentation, and we'll stay tuned for what happens tonight. Okay, moving on to policies, we have two policies this evening to review. First up is ADF School District Wellness Program. This is our third and final reading tonight, and we will be voting on this policy. Anybody have any questions, concerns about the policy? Anybody on the phone?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to the next one. JICFB, the Bullying Prevention Policy. Again, this is another third reading, and we will be voting on this policy this evening. Any final questions or comments on this policy? Seeing anything in the room, on the phone? Okay, moving on. So we're on to action items. You're muted. Still muted.
See, I wasn't the only one.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve the revised policy, ADF School District Wellness Program recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions or comments? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
A move to approve the revised policy, JICFG Bullying Prevention Recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Any questions on bullying prevention policy? Seeing none in the room. Anybody on the phone? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
A move to approve a one-year unpaid leave of absence for paraprofessional Ashley Brown for the period August 25th, 2020 through August 24th, 2021, recommended.
So moved.
A second.
Questions on that? Anybody on the phone? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
A move to approve the agreement between the Southwick, Tallinn, Granville Regional School Committee and David Sanchagran for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that agreement? Seeing none in the room, on the phone? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a no. Motion passes 610.
Move to approve the Home Education Proposals, HS 2021-64 through HS 2021-71, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the Home Educational Proposals? Seeing none in the room, how about on the phone? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700.
A move to rescind the motion to postpone the 2020 Fall Athletic Season to commence in the spring of 2021 so that teams may participate in the MIAA Fall Two Season for the 2021 school year. That motion, which passed at the meeting on September 2nd, 2020, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions on this?
This is just to rescind the vote and not a vote for anything else right now.
Correct, so.
What does this accomplish?
Yeah, so in order for us to vote on a different proposal, we need to rescind the vote that was made last, at the last meeting. We've, we've left the next motion open for discussion so that the committee could either vote on the recommendation of the A.D. or have a conversation and pick one of the different options or come up with our own option. So I think it's probably warranted some conversation on our side before we make a motion to rescind this vote. It's, it's a mixed, judging by all the conversations in the room, there's a lot of unsettlement on certain aspects of the plan. You know, can the A.D. get something pulled together? Could we have another meeting on Thursday? We probably could. But I think, I think everybody has to have a conversation at this point. Let's be respectful of each other's opinions on this, and let's start putting things on the table and try to come up with some sort of proposal that we think we can move forward with, whether, whether it be decided that we're going to meet again on Thursday or whether it be decided that we pick a different path and we, we vote tonight. So with that in mind, what are, what are some of folks' thoughts on this topic tonight?
I don't know that, this is John, so I don't know that we, it feels to me like the only choice right now that's going to garner the votes to approve something for sports would be us having another meeting where we get more details. That's kind of where I'm, what I'm thinking. I mean, what, what I feel is, is different from what, what I'm thinking will achieve some sort of compromise in us having agreement on something. I don't know if we're going to be able to agree on what has been put out there yet. Certainly seems like more detail is needed to get everyone there. So that's that. I mean, the best I can come up with is just we reconvene in a couple of days with hopefully a better, a better presentation with more detail about what specific steps that can be laid out and to solve the problems that some of the members have with various issues for transportation to equity to those kinds of things.
Or can we potentially avoid another meeting by creating a motion that includes the stipulations that we need now that need to have, be followed through? Is that a possibility?
This is Maria. I don't feel comfortable. I don't have the data. I, I, I think I asked for data. You know, I just want to see something. I, I'm a visual person. The, the intentions of putting something together is great. Believe me, I work in an environment that we have to come up with ideas, and they might not be on paper, but they look great. And then it's only valid until it's in black and white. Right now, we have issues or concerns with the equality. That, you know, we need to make sure that everybody's taken in account. We cannot leave anybody out of participating in a varsity program because they're not on the cohorts A or B, because they, you know, we, we can't exclude anybody. That's a legality issue. I need to see it. I cannot, I, I don't have any information. We asked for a lot tonight. He presented, you know, his five options, but we need more information.
So can we narrow down any options? Because I gotta be honest with you, I'm just like, I, I need one or two options because can, can, can we, can we take some of those off the plate and focus on what we're really looking at here?
So that means, this is Maria again, so that means we will have to come up with a plan. Is that what you're saying?
Well, can we just look at those five options and just say, okay, no, 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 possibility, possibility, and then narrow it down that way? I mean, I'm really, I'm kind of looking to avoid another meeting here, but at this point in time, I'm just not convinced that, that, that we've got the meat here to make this work. So maybe we can get from, down from five options to two options?
I think I said something earlier about compromise here. So I think that of the options that Dave had proposed, is there a compromise that the school board can live with tonight to move forward with some form of sports? I think option one unfortunately presents some equity questions and some legality questions that we would need to get answers. For some context for you folks, behind the scenes, the district reached out to Desi about the potential of forcing students to do fully remote. The initial response, not formal response, was no, you can't do that. We've then requested their full legal response on that. We have not gotten that yet. So I guess my concern is, in two days, are we going to be able to get the, the legal answers that we're looking for? Probably not likely. So what can we compromise on and still try to give some, what, some experience in the middle of this pandemic? In my mind, and I'm, I'm just going to put it out there, we are in the middle of a pandemic. This is not business as usual. There's going to be compromise until this situation is cleaned up. The school year is going to look very differently. And, you know, the traditions that we normally have in this community unfortunately are changing. There, there's just no way around it. And when talking to the students, I think they recognize that. And I think some of their concerns were voiced, and I'll share them with you right now. You know, they don't want to lose their skill sets. You know, seniors obviously don't want to lose their senior year. They really want to play. But we had a conversation about, okay, it was a five to two vote. So what was your takeaway from the school board meeting that night? What, what was the, what was the concern? And one of the young ladies said safety. I said, okay, that's a very broad thing. What, what specifically though? What is the big concern here? And Superintendent Willard and I kind of fill in the blanks of, you know, you guys are going to be going to other school districts. You guys are going to have the potential to bring this back. You know, despite the MIA's best intentions of doing what they're going to do on the field, you know, you're still going into a different community. You're still putting yourself at risk to, to bring that not only back to the district, but to your family. So that was kind of the dynamic of that conversation. You know, I've been involved with a few conversations. And after speaking to the kids and trying to listen to their perspective as well. Unfortunately, I don't think that we're going to make a popular decision, no matter what in this scenario. I it's just, that's my personal opinion here. So what is it that we possibly can do that will give them something? And in my mind, right now, where I'm heading is intramural. Let them practice, let them play against each other, but it's here in our district. They're not going anywhere else. I think one of the hardest facts that I'm struggling to get by is the fact that four out of the six districts are fully remote. So it doesn't matter what's going on with those sports teams and their schools. So, you know, I'm looking at it like, okay, this is apples and bananas here. You've got four apples and two bananas. And one of the bananas decided to go in a direction that I don't think all of us are agreeing with. So can we pick a path that gives them something? Gives them an opportunity to keep their skills honed for potentially next year, depending on what's going on with this pandemic? And then move forward because I think, like I said earlier on, unfortunately, we're out of time. And I'm not sure that the answers that he brings forth are going to help some of these issues. That's my thought process. And I guess I would end with, you know, we heavily rely on the superintendent's recommendation. And that that is not something that is light on me. You know, we have certain hierarchy in this organization to do certain things. And when it gets to that point, we are under the understanding that the the I's are crossed and the T's are dotted. I'm sorry, backwards. I's are dotted and T's are crossed. And that it's ready for us to make a a formal decision on it. And the superintendent made a recommendation last time with her sound mind on and reasoning on what she was choosing to do. So I guess I'm going to yield the floor at this point, and I would like the superintendent to add in at this point, do you have any recommendation based on some of the options that are out there? Is there something that, you know, the school board is missing that we we should be considering?
Thank you, Chairman Will. Can you hear me? Okay, first, I would like to just address something that came up earlier in the public comments section. I just want to make it very clear that the school committee, well in advance of our school committee meeting, four to five days beforehand, received the MIAA guidelines. They received the athletic director's planned proposal at that time. And they received the P.E. requirements that I was basing my entire presentation off. So although the public may not always be aware of what happens behind the scenes, policies are followed. The school committee was given the actual documents that I was basing my presentation on, and I want to just make that very, very clear. That they have all, they had all the information before the meeting. What I simply did was take all the information and synthesized synthesized it down, basing it on my recommendation. I do agree. I am a huge advocate of sports, and I heard the kids say that being part of a team was very important to them. That it's like their family. I I think a great compromise could be the potential of intramurals being held here on our school grounds. It would allow for the equity issue because the students who are participating don't have to choose between the remote or the hybrid option. It was an option that we had considered before I made my recommendation. I had been in contact with the state. It was something that we had looked into. Although it was not something that I'm supportive of, it was something that I did look into. I do believe that education is the top priority in this district, but I also believe that the extracurriculars such as drama, band, music, athletics, art are very important in the lives of our students and are just as important because for some of our students, that's what gets them to school every day. So if the school committee is in support of it, I would like to see our students be able to have that team feeling if they did choose to play intramurally on our school grounds. But they have to make sure that they're following those MIAA guidelines. I I need to see those social distancing. I need to see the masks wearing. I need to see the protocols being followed. I I need to see the rams, the respect, the accountability, the motivation. That's what's going to lead to success. And I I I think we're all learning that through this pandemic, there's no one answer here. There's no right answer. There's no wrong answer. There's going to be decisions made that some of us are happy with and some of us are not going to be happy with. I think this is a unique time in our lives where we're all learning some serious lessons about life and about compromise and about change. And business not being what it always was. But that we can find some positives through this pandemic. So I could fully support an intramural program here at the school. And if that's the direction you'd like to go in, I I am in supportive of that.
So this is Pam. I'm ready to chime in on this one. If you you previously mentioned two weeks ago in the context of equity that you had kind of put a lid on other extracurriculars as well. So if we were to approve intramurals, would we also then open the door for other non-athletic extracurricular activities?
We would have to. I I know that there's some that we cannot do right now. For example, musical theater is not allowed. Band has some very strict guidelines where they have to practice outdoors and being in New England, it's just not a reasonable accommodation that can be made. Chorus has some very strict guidelines, but it would be something we would have to look at as a case by case basis. Outdoor being the qualifying factor right now because a lot of the indoor have very strict guidelines, mask wearing, social distancing. They don't have the same airflow. So we would have to look at things on a case by case basis and based on the state recommendations.
Thank you. My second question is if we were to allow for and provide for intramurals. Like you said, we would need to be 100% confident that safety protocols were continuously being followed. Because we have worked so hard to create those safety protocols within the school building. And can we can we put in some like clause that like we shut it down if we don't see this happening? Like, can can we put in the, you know, this is what will happen if we don't see this?
Exactly, Pam. So over the summer, I did put a stop to captains practices because the protocols were not being followed. We were not practicing social distancing. The students were not wearing masks. I was getting multiple phone calls from concerned community members. So we did put a stop to captains practices. It would be the same practice I would put in place now where if we cannot follow the safety protocols, then then it's then it's over. This isn't one of those, you know, three strikes and you're out. This is COVID is very real. It does affect our community. It affects the communities surrounding us. And it's today was the first day of school, seeing kids back in the hallways that I'm going to report about in a few minutes. I can't tell you what that felt like for the teachers, for the paraprofessionals, for the administrators, and for central central office who've been working all summer to put our best plan in place for the education of our children. And I will do everything I can to keep that sacred right now.
You're off.
So I guess I would be okay with this if we were to require any intramural teams to follow the MIAA guidelines. And that so that we know exactly what the requirements are, what needs to be followed. And if we had, you know, a document in place that indicated consequences, you know, is it like a one strike and you're out kind of deal? Or is it two strikes and you're out? Like, how how is this going to work? I guess I, you know, if I saw that, I could be, I I think I could support it.
And I also want to make it clear that I said intramurals, the the two sports that I'm not comfortable with is intramurals are girls volleyball and unified basketball, simply because it's an indoor. And I would be comfortable with moving girls volleyball and unified basketball to the Fall Two season.
So I for my two cents. So I think that the, I I mean, I think that the intramural thing, and I think we, I I brought it up earlier, too, that that was a a possible middle. And I think that that's, you know, probably, I guess, where we're headed. And I I agree with what Pam is is asking for, for there to be specific guidelines, the consequences, because we're certainly we're on a razor thin thing here where we're going to go out on a limb and allow it. If we do go and allow it, we need 100%, you know, everything to be followed, and it's not a joke, that kind of a thing. The only thing I would ask for is if we could still have, so we would go forward with the intramural idea. But could we still have the the A.D. present to us two weeks from now? If he's able to answer some of those concerns about the other the other towns and playing the other towns, if we can alleviate those concerns two weeks from now, we can at least address that again, whether or not we can expand it or not and keep it intramural. I get that it's likely that that won't happen. And I don't want to get anybody's hopes up that it that it is going to happen. But I feel like we could, we'll we'll know a little bit more in a couple of weeks about how well school has gone and and what we've seen for, if we're if rates are going up or or other things. And, you know, you can argue just about any one of these points, any which way you want to argue it. The I see in some instances, the other schools being remote as an advantage for us because those kids are kept away from their kids at at their school. So they're, you know, you could make an argument that they're at home, they're they have less exposure. So when we see them, there's not as much exposure for everybody. But like I said, you can argue any one of these to the, which way you want, for as long as you want, however you want. But I I would be fine with, I I'm definitely about giving them something rather than nothing. And if intramural is what folks can support, my only hope is that we could at least give another couple of weeks after that as a just a double checkpoint that we still can't play other other towns. I know that the a schedule would have to come up quickly, probably, but I'm just throwing that out there as a as a side piece to that idea.
I'm going to defer that to Jen.
It's not my vote.
No, no, I mean, as far as Dave coming back to the table with a more more cohesive plan to try to answer the mail on the the inequity piece and transportation concerns.
I think he could come in two weeks. I have a feeling, based on what I know about high school sports, I think there's a timeline in which they have to notify the bubble if we will be participating in the bubble or not. And I don't know if Dave or Joe Tumel is still on, but they might have an answer to that question.
Yeah, the schedules are being put together this week and into the beginning part of next week. I don't know that we would be able to get a schedule, a schedule made after the first part of next week. I I I have a PBIAC A.D.'s meeting tomorrow. I can ask that question, but I I don't know that that's going to be realistically, if that's going to be possible. Officials need to be assigned and you know, there's other logistical concerns that that might make that an issue.
Well, I assume there's a possibility, too, that we could play less games, right? Like, if if we're if Southwood's going to join, that we could join a month later. I I have to imagine that everything we're doing in these fall sports, there's nothing, there's no such thing as like a regional or a state or any of that kind of stuff. So it doesn't seem to me that if we waited a couple of weeks, like, we can't, we couldn't add those games if if we wanted to. I just, with only having, I think, what was it, six or eight other schools? You know, even if we gave our kids three or four games, I I just want to leave that open as something. I get it that there's like a 5% chance of it happening. But I think it would be, I I said, I think, in the last meeting, too, that I was interested in seeing how the first couple of weeks of school went, too. Just to see what kind of issues we run into and that kind of thing. So I like the idea of getting them on the field and getting them to play. And let's see how the next couple of weeks go and see if we have more information, if we could make some kind of a modified schedule with that group or not. That's just that's the that's the best I got of trying to cut it both ways, I guess.
Sounds like a compromise.
Yeah, I'm miserable, you're miserable, we're all miserable. Okay, good.
I appreciate, yeah, that idea, too, John. I don't really want to fully give up the idea of, even though I did before, but then the idea of participating at this point.
I don't want to give them false hope either. I I want to make it clear that there's a very, very small chance, the way things are going, that it sounds like we're getting to the intramural thing, and that's going to be better than where we were in my mind a couple of weeks ago. But you know, that that next step is a big one, and there's a lot of issues around it, so.
Yeah, we want the kids to play. We want them to get an experience that they can really enjoy, but we really need to make sure that we have our ducks in a row.
One other thing, just on the on this, on the, I'm looking at the golf thing, you know, that that is possible to play with our kids going to the course, shooting a score and matching it up with another school. The other school doesn't have to be there, per se. Just throwing that out there, somebody who played that in high school, but you know, I don't want to run into another equity issue, but that's just a a thought on their end for that. That sport's a little bit different.
And I think that the field hockey and cross country were on postponing and and this and section of the option, too, because of the survey that went out, I'm thinking. So I would I would want them to be in a separate category, I think, going forward. Field hockey.
So it's sound, if I can summarize, and if folks on the phone want to interject, please do. So it sounds like the board is willing to entertain potentially golf playing. The other sports doing intramural, with exception to volleyball and the diversified basketball, which would be postponed to fall season, too.
And those are entirely because they're inside, right?
Correct. So we would have to amend the the following action item. If the committee, if the committee's willing to entertain golf actually playing, the other sports doing intramural, with exception to volleyball and the diversified basketball, because they're inside. The only thing, the only thing that's coming to mind that we might have to be careful on would be Title IX. Do you think that's going to be a problem?
Dave may be Dave may be able to answer that better, but I believe our golf team, you can have both males and females participate. Am I correct, Dave?
Yeah, we do have a female on the golf team currently.
You said to amend the motion, Mr. Chairman?
So first, we'd have to, we're on rescind right now.
Right.
But before we move on that, I want to make sure that everybody, that we have some sort of a path forward. I don't want to rescind this, and then we we're we're all in a do loop here. So if we think we have a path forward here, then we will close the floor to questions on this. We'll move forward with voting on rescinding. And then we will go on to the next action item. I'll entertain a motion to amend the action item. go on to the next action item. I'll entertain a motion to amend the action item, and we'll go from there. I'm seeing a lot of heads bobbing, yes, in the room. How about on the phone?
This is Maria. Yes, I agree with that.
I agree with that as well.
Okay. All right. Any last questions on rescinding the vote on athletics? Seeing none. Anybody on the phone? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. It requires just a majority vote to rescind our previous vote on fall athletics. Pam, you're not on.
Yes.
I'm not on.
I am, too.
You can hear?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. It was a yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
You know what it is? I think the volume on my, there we go. I got muted. Maria, were you a yes?
I was a yes.
Okay. Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. So the motion passes to rescind the vote, 700. Okay, so now we need to, I need a motion on the floor. Actually, let's have the superintendent read the original motion.
Move to approve one of the options presented for the fall sports 2020.
It's up to you.
Move to approve one of the modified options presented for fall sports 2020 recommended.
I believe it was option two in my presentation.
So let's, I'll entertain a motion, and let's, are there any questions on the motion on the floor? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion at this point to modify this to the following. So move to approve option two presented for fall sports 2020, being that golf would be allowed to be played at the interscholastic level. The other sports would be played at the intermural level, with exception to volleyball and the diversified basketball, which would be postponed to fall season two. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And does that include the other verbiage about reevaluating in two weeks?
I think on the outside here, we're going to ask Mr. Sanchegrin to continue to put his due diligence into coming back to us, our next school board.
Okay, and at that point, we could make another motion to change. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to modify the fall sports 2020 motion. Any questions on that?
This is Maria. This will include all cohorts. Hybrid will stay hybrid, and it will include cohorts A, B, and C. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So are we, I guess, two weeks ago, we had an issue with golf, realizing that it was seemingly safe, but we felt concerned about equity. So, you know, I just want to hear from, I guess, Superintendent Willard, that, that you're okay with this compromise, and that this is still, you know, within your core values.
It is within my core values, because the first one is safety, and I'm looking to do whatever I can possibly to keep everybody safe. In my original presentation, I wrote that there were no changes to golf. At that time, I didn't, I did not feel comfortable saying that only golf could go out and play. Well, there was nothing for everybody else. I feel that providing all of our athletes with an intermural option to be part of a team, to participate, to play the sport they love, is a compromise. And as Jonathan just said a few minutes ago, golf doesn't even have to be played against somebody else. You could go out and play, and somebody else could play the same course, and you could look at numbers.
Well, yeah, assuming it's, I mean, I guess you can do that either way. I assume it's match play. I don't know all the particulars, but yeah, it's easy enough to, to do something like that.
Right. There's no shared equipment. There's no change to the rules. There, there's no, there's no changes.
Yeah. I, and yeah, I think that was, that was my issue with it, too. Like, it really felt like we couldn't let one, I feel better letting, if we're going to let others, that that alleviates some of that.
Any other questions?
Are we getting the golf team to their matches?
It would be the same as we always do. We would transport them to the golf. We have to actually transport them to their practice facilities, anyway.
Now, do they, they still go to all kinds of different courses around, right?
They do.
Okay. But they would still be only playing those teams in that bubble, right?
You got to be correct, Dave.
Yes.
Is golf like you just play one other team? Is that like cross country where there's multiple at one site?
It can be multiple at one, but I don't know how they, I don't know what the regulations are. I mean, when I played it, it was, you could have multiple, obviously, because you could have three other people in your pairing from three different schools. But I don't know what the guidelines are for MIA for it.
Yeah. Due to, due to time, time restraints, if they start at 3 o'clock, it gets dark by, you know, 5-ish, they don't really have time to add extra teams. So it's usually just one, one school versus the other.
I got to think that they wouldn't especially allow that now, either.
Yeah, definitely not.
Any other questions? Again, we're voting on the motion to change the language in the current motion. See, no more questions. We're going to move on to vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Oop, yes.
Ted? John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700. Okay, so now we're back to the modified motion. We've already got the motion on the floor.
Should we type the motion to see it visually? Sorry. I'm the worst, sorry.
Are you visual people?
Give Amy two seconds.
I think it's, yeah, as painful as we are to Amy, it would be good to have that up so everyone can see it.
Amy, it's essentially option number two on my presentation. You might have to change some of the verbiage.
With the exception of letting golf play interscholastically.
Field hockey. To the fall two season.
Thank you. I know it was a pain in the butt, but I appreciate having it in writing as well. Those darn teachers.
So we have the modified motion on the floor. Pam?
Yes.
No, no, no.
Oh, I have to say so moved?
Yes.
Okay. Come on, it's getting late here. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any final questions on this motion? Any questions on the phone?
No.
Okay, we're going to now vote on this. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 700. Get back to our agenda.
And we'll be able to add Mr. Sanchegrin onto our upcoming agenda.
Okay, moving on to the next section, reports. Superintendent Willard, you're up first.
So I'm going to keep this short. I just wanted to say it was so exciting after six months to see all of our staff and students arriving on big yellow school buses today, and parents drop off, watching a lot of different new procedures taking place, and it went smoothly. So today in our district, we started with first grade and second grade at Woodland School with some kindergarten orientation. Grades three and four started at Powdermill School today, and grades seven and nine at the regional school. Very exciting. I also just wanted to share just some numbers that have come in, and just some things that we do need to start thinking about. I hate to even say we need to start looking at next school year already, but I just want to give the school committee and the community just some numbers out there that are going to affect our budget for the FY '22 school year. Our homeschooling numbers in FY '20 were at 37. This year, we are currently at 71. That is a drastic increase, and it doesn't impact our budget for this school year, but it will have an impact on our budget for the upcoming school year. So I just want to make everybody aware of that. It is a trend. It is not something that is unique to South McTalley and Granville. It is across the entire state. Our numbers are actually not as drastic as what you're seeing in some communities, but I do want to make you aware of them. And the other number that I think is really important, again, not unique to South McTalley and Granville, something, again, superintendents are concerned about, are kindergarten numbers. This year, we were looking at our enrollment, and this year, we're at 76 students in kindergarten, where last year, we were at 94. So again, kindergarten can still fluctuate a little bit, but I just want to make you aware that student enrollment will be dropping this year pretty significantly. We're going to keep our eye on it. And I will keep you updated on numbers throughout the course of the school year on a more routine basis than I have in the past, just so that you're aware of things as we look at this upcoming school year.
I wonder if this is something that we should advocate for as a committee, or send a letter to the state about maybe using last year's numbers before they recalculate our, our money.
That would be nice. I have been on calls, and they're, they're still planning on using the October 1 Sims data. So that hasn't changed, but we are advocating as superintendents, we need to look at something because of this year being unique, and the impact that it could have on next school year. And our commissioner has mentioned it, and he's aware of it. So he is advocating at the state level for this as well. But as, as he told us, he wants us as superintendents to be aware of these numbers, and to keep our eye on them, and to think about the potential impact of the upcoming school year.
Any other questions for Superintendent Willard? Seeing none in the room on the phone. Okay, moving on to the Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnel.
Not, not so much of a report, Mr. Chairman, but as Superintendent Willard pointed out, we did have a very successful, albeit rather small, opening today, and things went remarkably well, all things considered. I just want to express my deep appreciation to the team on our Buildings and Grounds Department, the work that they did to ready the schools, to put the necessary precautions in place from a sanitization and access standpoint was truly heroic. Also, major shout out to our IT folks, including the instructional technology coach, Mr. Tagliari, and Mr. Grimaldi, our IT director, worked tirelessly with their staffs throughout the summer to try to get devices ready and into the hands of students and staff. There's still much work to be done. We're still receiving bad news around timelines for receipt of the roughly 1,200 devices that were ordered, beginning all the way back in late May. And we're, so, so that's disappointing, but the work that, that these guys and ladies did to have devices ready and, and working, for the most part, was also heroic. We're still experiencing some challenges around this, but all that stuff will get worked out slowly but surely. They're kind of over, overwhelmed with, with help desk tickets right now. And lastly, with transportation and the work that the Karen Zoric and her staff at LPVAC did to have vehicles assigned and ready to go today. Few hiccups that we're working through, but we almost expect that when things are normal. This year was extraordinarily challenging with the number of different schedules that we had to accommodate. And so we, we continue to ask for your patience with some of those transportation and IT issues. We'll, we'll get that stuff worked out in short order. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Presnel? Any on the phone? Okay, moving on to the next section. Next up is subcommittees and liaisons. Nothing for negotiations. Finance, we had to reschedule our meeting. And I remember seeing an invite, but I don't have the date on hand. What was the new date?
I'm not sure if you saw the invite for the October meeting.
Okay.
I'll research that.
Okay. LPVAC, Pam, do you have a, no update? Okay. My team, my side of LPVAC has not met either, so I don't have an update there. Policy Subcommittee? Any?
We have not met yet, in a while.
We probably also need to revisit the, we still haven't reformed different committees, right?
Yes, we do.
Had time to do that.
I don't believe I have seen any special requests for any subcommittee. So if you're interested to change something up, please email me and copy Amy on the email, and we'll, we will get this changed up.
I keep meaning to send you a note, and I keep not doing it.
I emailed Amy. Do you want me to email you?
Sure.
All right.
Sure.
Now I have to remember what I said.
Okay. Any other subcommittees and liaisons that would like to report tonight? Seeing none. Okay, we'll move on to our second public comment. And I'll ask Amy to kindly look at the superintendent email address and see what we have for public comment. the superintendent email address and see what we have for public comment.
Okay, Chairman Hu, I have a couple of public comments. Okay. The first comment is Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. Why was the AD not allowed to make this presentation to the school board at the last meeting on September 2nd? All the questions that the school board members are valid, but this presentation should have been allowed to have been brought forward weeks before the meeting. Knowing that the community was going to not agree with her decision, the superintendent should have brought this in a timely manner so the community and AD could have come up with all the specifics that the school board is looking for. This was delayed for a reason and to take out, take it out on the AD as to why the specifics were not in his proposal is disheartening. The superintendent should have provided her recommendation and allowed the ADs to make his presentation to give enough time to be able to provide the details that the committee is requesting and allow us to work this out well before the state. I wish the school committee were as engaged in questioning the superintendent when she recommended no sports two weeks ago. The AD was given a very short timeline to come up with this presentation and tried to come up with a number of options that tried to address the concerns of the school board. I'm sure if he was provided a couple of weeks to come up with specific details by engaging with the community and the parents of student athletes, we could have done that. The way that this was handled looks like it will cost these students their fall season. The second public comment is Clark Moore, Westfield, Mass. Why is the policy for kids and staff, oh, what is the policy for kids and staff entering the building each day? Are we trusting them or is there a protocol they follow? And how is athletics any different? And then Clark Moore, Westfield, Mass. How are kids not in cohorts in school that day going to get to intramurals? And that concludes public comment.
Okay, moving on to committee discussion. Do any committee members have any old business they'd like to address at this time? Seeing none in the room on the phone. Any new business items for this evening? Seeing none in the room. Anybody on the phone? Okay, I will, at this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, 700. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in with us tonight and have a good, good evening.